Mr. Chairman, this is Teresa. We're live and ready to begin when you are.
Thank you, Teresa. I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 19th, 2021, meeting of Hilton Head Island's Planning Commission. Teresa, are we in compliance with FOIA?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you, Teresa. And would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon?
Here.
Mr. Alfred?
Here.
Mr. Theodore?
Here.
Mr. Christian?
Here.
And Mr. Stevens is excused.
Thank you, Teresa. All right, we have our agenda in front of us. Does staff have any changes to the agenda, Teresa?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? All right, Michael and Stephen, any changes proposed or otherwise? Hearing none, all those in favor, put your hand up in the air. Teresa, that looks like unanimous to me.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we have our minutes of the meeting of May 5th, 2021. You can have a motion to approve those minutes.
Don't move.
Leslie and Stephen, second. Does anyone have any changes or suggested additions to our minutes? All right, hearing none, all those in favor approving the minutes, hand up in the air again. All right, that looks unanimous to me. Alan, did you have your hand up, or are you abstaining, or?
Yeah, no, my hand was up.
Okay, perfect. That's unanimous, Teresa, did you get that?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Perfect, okay, Teresa, you are up, appearance by citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public comments concerning agenda items were to be submitted electronically via the open town hall portal. Those comments were provided to the commission for review and made part of the official record. Citizens were also provided the option to give public comment during the meeting by phone, however, there were no requests to give public comment by phone.
Okay, we have no unfinished business. We have one item of new business, that is the Hazard Mitigation Plan 2020 Update, and this is for our review and recommendation to the town council, I believe. And Sherri, you're going to be addressing the commission on this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Sherri, you have the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. I am Sherri Mandrick, Flood Plane Administrator for the Town of Hilton Head Island, and staff is bringing forward to you the 2020 Low Country Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Staff recommends that that Planning Commission approve a resolution to recommend that town council adopt the 2020 Low Country Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan as an appendix to our plan. The adoption of the 2020 plan will fulfill the continuing requirements that qualify the Town of Hilton Head for FEMA pre-disaster mitigation grants, post-disaster reconstruction assistance, and continued participation in the community rating system. I do have a short PowerPoint presentation, if you'd like some additional details, or I would just be happy to answer questions at this time.
What's the pleasure of the commission? Would you like Sherri to run her PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Sherri, please proceed.
All right, give me just one second. Everybody see that?
Affirmative.
Meeting, okay, thank you. This plan is an update of the 2015 Beaufort County Hazard Mitigation Plan and the 2015 Low Country Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, which includes Colleton, Hampton, and Jasper Counties. According to the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, as amended by the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2020, the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan is required by FEMA for all counties in the state of South Carolina. The plan is, I quote, "the representation of the jurisdiction's commitment to reduce the risks from natural hazards, serving as a guide for decision-makers as they commit resources to reducing the effects of natural hazards." The plan must meet the requirements of the code, of federal regulations, and be approved by FEMA in order for a community to be eligible for FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant programs. The plan is also credited activity for the town's Community Rating System, or CRS, for which our participation allows our citizens to obtain a 25% discount on their flood insurance. As with the 2015 Hazard Mitigation Plan, pardon me, as with the 2015 Hazard Mitigation Plan, the plan was prepared by the Low Country Council of Governments, or the ALCOG. This plan is the first fully multi-jurisdictional plan for all the counties in the Low Country, including Beaufort, Colleton, Hampton, and Jasper Counties. Just for a little geographic location, here's a geographical area of the Low Country region that's covered by the plan. Thank you to the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources for this map. FEMA requires that each plan contain five criteria, the first of which is the planning process. The plan was coordinated by the ALCOG under an individual memorandum of understanding with each county in the ALCOG. The planning team was comprised of representatives from the four counties, the Town of Hilton Head Island, the Town of Edisto Beach, and ALCOG staff. Technical assistance was provided by the University of South Carolina Hazards and Vulnerability Research Institute. Socioeconomic information, including population, housing, and economy, were obtained from the U.S. Census Bureau and the South Carolina Department of Employment and Workforces. There were many other resources that were used throughout this document, to include resources from FEMA, NOAA, the National Lightning Detection Network, South Carolina Emergency Management Division, South Carolina Department of Natural Resources, the Southeast Regional Climate Center, and the USGS. The information from the residents of the Low Country were an integral part of the planning process. The planning effort involved opportunities for public comment through a community survey and public participation process. The second element is hazard identification and risk assessment. The hazard identification and risk assessment compiled for the Low Country region covers 12 different hazards that are of most concern to our region, to include tornado, hurricane, windstorm, lightning, hail, drought, earthquake, wildfire, floods, including king tide and sea level rise, winter storm, coastal erosion, and extreme heat. The third requirement is mitigation strategies. The goals of strategies from the 2015 plans were revised to respond to the region's current conditions. These including assessing updated socio-economic conditions, community survey results, emergency manager survey results, hazard identification of profiles, and the implementation of the status of the 2015 mitigation actions. All participating jurisdictions were contacted and notified of the planning process and the progress of the plan. The progress report and the draft final plans were distributed to the steering committee, of which I was a member, the stakeholders, for review and comments. The draft plan was made available for the public to review. Finally, the last requirement is plan adoption. As required by FEMA, I quote, "Each jurisdiction that is included in the plan must have its governing body adopt the plan prior to FEMA approval." The ALCOG on April 14th has requested that all participating jurisdictions formally adopt the 2020 Low Country Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan through approval of the resolution. In addition to meeting the five FEMA plan requirements, the hazard mitigation plan is also consistent with our plan and the Excellence in Strategy, Section 2.6, Environmental Goal 6, Regional Strategy 1.1, Infrastructure Goal 3, Infrastructure Strategies 5.6, 5.7, and 5.8. Whoops, I skipped a slide. And if you have any questions, I will be more than happy to answer them at this time.
Teresa, would you roll down the roll, and if the commissioner has a question for Sherri, please pipe up at that time.
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry?
Yeah, just really one simple question. From the last time the plan was done in 2015, what kind of changes did we see after Matthew that were changed within the 2020 plan?
The plan is actually updated annually. I bring a status report to town council every year based on, to keep our goals up to date. Some of the things that were added after Hurricane Matthew were upgrades to the EOC and any of, some of our emergency operations plans and preparations. For example, we had some communication issues, so that was addressed as a mitigation strategy that was added after Hurricane Matthew. We also had some storm drainage issues that were added as a result of Hurricane Matthew to include the Jarvis Creek Pump Station, to include, there is some stuff going on at Wexford, Long Island Pump Station, which is currently underway. But it was related to emergency management function and storm water improvement.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, no questions at this time.
Ms. McGowan?
I have no questions right now, thanks.
Mr. O'Neil?
Just a quick one, was this, did you say this was the first multi-jurisdictional plan? Have we done it before?
The last plan that included, that included the Town of Hilton Head Island was just a Beaufort County plan, so this is the first, there was a multi-jurisdictional plan that did not include us, but this is now our inclusion into the Low Country plan. So yes, this is the first multi-jurisdictional plan for the town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, a couple of questions. May I ask who, what elected officials or staff officials were involved in the development of this plan representing the island?
I was named as the representative for the island. Nancy Stevens, our Permits and Records Manager, was also appointed to help out with some of the information with regards to building permits. The project was turned over to me from Marcy Benson in 2018. So as far as this current plan update, their staff was included in the update, to include staff from engineering, stormwater, from emergency management, from facilities, to just name a few of the other staff members that were involved.
Can you tell me, in the event of a natural disaster, does FEMA or the whole planning group for the counties, have they looked at the possibility that our bridge is taken out, that, you know, one or more of our bridges taken out, and what happens at that point?
This plan is more for assessing infrastructure, not necessarily the emergency evacuation plan, emergency operations plan. That is actually something that's through the fire rescue department. Mr. Tom Dunn has several annexes to the emergency operation plan that would address situations like that. But this addresses vulnerability hazards, things to mitigate those vulnerability hazards. Looking at the 278 project, since it is DOT, is included as one of the assessments, but it is not necessarily a plan to address what if that were to happen.
Sounds to me like that would be something that we should be worried about. Lastly, I wanted to ask, is Taylor still on the call here?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to ask Taylor, with regard to our plan, were there any elements that we had to, we had concern with in regards to incorporating this into our plan?
Elements or core values?
Both.
Okay, sure, well, there's actually, in our plan, three goals that specifically speak to resiliency, which I think this topic does address, and one is in priority investment, which is one of our elements, and then the other two core values that have goals about this are infrastructure and environment. As far as the rest...
My concern is mainly infrastructure.
Yes, sir. Well, there is a goal about resilience and infrastructure, and then there's also a goal about public service, and so that's where a lot of this would fall under in infrastructure as part of the goals and strategies that might touch on matters pertaining to this topic.
And so you're confident this is a good move on our part, if we were to adopt this?
Absolutely, and specifically, there is a strategy in infrastructure that says that we should, and we need to.
Thank you.
It is definitely consistent with our plan.
Thank you to our award-winning, our plan staff. Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Mr. Alfred?
Yes. In light of the fact that this is a 350-page document, and that approval of the Planning Commission and the town council is called for, was any consideration given to preparing an executive summary?
I don't have the answer, sir. I could ask the ALCOG staff if they do have an executive summary that they could provide.
Yeah, I think it would be very helpful for bodies such as ours and the town council to have a document that's somewhat shorter than 350 pages. Another question, unless I missed it, I didn't see very much reference to the problem of potential rising sea levels, which would, I would think, would be one of our... Is that intended for me, Mark? Which I would think would be one of our major concerns. Did I miss something?
Yes, sir. No, sir. There are some issues that are identified in the Hazard Mitigation Plan that do...
You're breaking up.
...losses, and how we want to mitigate those. I apologize, how about now?
Yeah, better.
Am I good now? Okay. There's things that are identified in the Hazard Mitigation Plan to address losses that have already occurred, but yes, I do agree that there could be some more strength that the ALCOG could put into addresses with sea level rise, but outside of this Hazard Mitigation Plan, with the municipal code that was recently adopted with regard to the flood elevations and the lowest floor requirements, that was one of the biggest drives that we had to keep that lowest floor elevation higher, was the, you know, background effect of any sea level rise or changing environmental conditions. Beaufort County also has a sea level rise task force. Sylvia Ryan is a participant, I have also attended this meeting, and Taylor is still on the call, and there are several components in our plan that do address sea level rise and climate change. Am I correct, Taylor?
You are correct, that would be the same resilience goals that I spoke to earlier. So the thing about the Hazard Mitigation Plan that we're talking about today is it does incorporate four counties, of which we are the only one on the water, though there may not be as much in there that addresses it as we would like, but that is why more at a local level and more granular to us, we do address it in various things we're doing with our county and at our, through our plan specifically.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Sherri, as part of the, sort of the multi-region incorporation, what does that mean? Is that where you begin to define how to share resources when there's an emergency?
Yes.
And is that different than the way things have been done in the past, or there's always been that as a resource, it's just now put into writing?
Exactly. The resource has always been there, but now this is the opportunity for the groups to actually communicate in a pre-planning process to, you know, instead of an emergency response process. So that way, we know where resources are allocated, or supplies are allocated ahead of time, that when we need to call on those resources, it's much easier to find those resources than to try to scramble and find them in emergency mode, basically. So it gives us the opportunity to plan and to do some more coordination efforts ahead of...
Okay. And then, and this may be outside of this report, you know, I know one of the big things was, you know, where to stockpile all the debris on the island. Has that still stayed the same, or has that sort of been refined as time has evolved since sort of the last hurricanes?
That is not something that is addressed, as far as the location to stockpile material in the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Debris removal is addressed, in that there is a joint effort between the communities to remove debris, but the Hazard Mitigation Plan does not address where debris is stored. I'm not sure if that is something that's in our plan, Taylor, that might be a little bit of a stretch, but I don't think that it is.
It's not in our plan, but what I do know from working on the park projects that I've been involved with, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, is that we do have, let's see, just specific notes in our work on the programming for each of the parks we're working on that say that there's potential for debris management sites to remain where they have been in the past at Chaplain Community Park and potentially at the Mid-Island Track. So as far as I know, that's unchanged.
Because I heard there was some damage to infrastructure when that was done, and sort of had to minimize that risk in the future, so I didn't know if that meant relocating some of those locations.
As of right now, for Chaplain Community Park with our park planning, we are taking into consideration that it could be used as a debris management site in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And then, Sherri, I would think, to some degree, you know, with the, you know, discussions of rising waters and things like that, and I would assume it's going to be addressed with 278 corridor, the bridge, that the causeway, I think, is what's at risk with the high rising waters, because I know that in past storms, it's gotten real close to the pavement elevation, so I don't know if that's part of, you know, dealing with that, or at least being able to try to mitigate that in the future so that we're not at risk of, you know, being flooded on the causeway to be able to get off the island.
Yes, and one of the things that is one of the mitigation actions from Beaufort County is actually the study of vulnerable bridges and roadways that should be hardened, and it says the maintenance of these bridges and Hilton Head causeways. It is addressed as a mitigation right now. So because that process is progressing with DOT, it will, you know, it is something that is moving forward, and it is identified in the plan, but the plan does not necessarily guide that process. It does identify as a mitigation that we are undergoing. And that was Beaufort County, that was not necessarily in DOT, not necessarily specific to Hilton Head.
That was a little bit garbled, and I didn't catch, I think, some key elements in there. As you, could you go back and talk about the beginning of that answer with regard to the causeways and the bridges?
Yes, sir. One of the Beaufort County mitigation actions...
We're losing you there.
...that day...
Sherri, we're losing you again.
Let me, let me call, let me call it myself.
Or turn off your video, because you have poor bandwidth, from what we can see here.
That better? How about now?
Yes.
I can call in as well. So one of the mitigation actions is the study of the vulnerable bridges to determine which one should be hardened and conduct maintenance of these bridges and the Hilton Head causeways. This is, because the roadway, specifically 278, is a DOT roadway, this is something that is identified by Beaufort County and then assigned to DOT. So it is a study that, or it is a mitigation that's included, but it is in the form of study because the project is currently still in that stage.
That's it for my questions, thank you.
Are you good, Mike?
I think so. I may have to have a talk with Beaufort County.
Mr. Christian?
Yeah, I have, you know, two comments and a question. First, a question, Sherri, does approval of this plan, is this part of the pre-approval process that would allow us to get a 80% reimbursement from FEMA instead of the usual 75%?
I do not know the answer to that question. To the best of my knowledge, this is for additional grants and not necessarily related to the reimbursement contribution. I have not seen that anywhere in the document, nor has it been any part of our discussions as far as the steering committee goes. To the best of my knowledge, this addresses the eligibility for federal grants outside of, or federal assistance grants.
Okay, and what I'm talking about, after Matthew hit us, the town was pre-approved by FEMA for their disaster program, and due to that pre-approval, within certain parameters, the town was eligible to get 80% reimbursement from the federal government as opposed to the normal 75% reimbursement, and just wanted to know if this is part of that pre-approval process? And, you know, with the...
I don't have the answer.
You know, with the loss of Scott Liggett and Steve Riley and others, that may be a question that we should ask, because that 5% of millions and millions of dollars is a very, very big number.
I feel certain Jennifer Rae would probably know the answer to that question, but I can certainly find out and let you guys know.
Thank you. The two comments are, you know, I agree with Stephen, an executive summary, you know, by jurisdiction, and obviously, it's probably not possible for this particular document, but in the future, rather than to cull through, I know you need it for context, but to boil it down to a dozen pages directly related to Beaufort County or the Town of Hilton Head would be very, very beneficial. My other comment is, what, if any, influence did the new FEMA maps and the town's adoption of their new baseline flood elevation have in this plan?
At the time that the plan was being drafted, the maps had not yet been released. But this plan is more to mitigate things that have already happened. So, you know, for future impacts and that kind of thing, it is identified as one of those goals, but it doesn't have an effect on, like, the repetitive loss structure. They are so bad at loss structures in the eyes of FEMA. So those flood maps are not necessarily had much influence on the way that this plan went, because it's to mitigate losses that have already occurred for this repetitive loss properties.
I know some of my colleagues on the commission and staff disagrees with Stephen and I, but we were of the opinion that, you know, lowering, you know, the base flood elevation for first floor was a mistake, but, you know, that, we were outvoted, and that's fine. And what you're saying is that's not even included in this particular mitigation plan, which in my humble opinion makes us more vulnerable to flooding, not less.
We continue to enforce building codes, higher regulatory standards are looked at as one of the mitigation actions, but the specific number that we put on the lowest floor is not a factor that was taken into account with this mitigation plan. We are looked at as higher.
Understood. I merely bring it up to put it on the record. Any other questions from among the commissioners? Otherwise, I will call for, Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, this just kind of occurred to me, but I heard two very good presentations last week, just coincidentally. One was from the Port Royal Foundation marine biologist that was showing time-lapsed pictures of the removal of forests and wetlands and the rest from '94 until now, and while I knew that a lot of growth was coming, that was a very powerful display... And while I knew that a lot of growth was coming, that was a very powerful display of how much loss we're getting of, you know, of permeability across the region. And then we saw a presentation from the mayor of Hardyville, which highlighted the major growth that's anticipated there with or without the port. And with the port, it's just more of that. And I'm just, I know this isn't a next-year thing, but I do think we should raise the level of environmental awareness on this in a global basis. That's why I was happy to see that it's multi-jurisdictional. But I do think that's an issue that coming together means different stuff for us in terms of the environment.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? All right, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the plan to be forwarded to the town council with our recommendation for adoption. Mark, you moving?
Yes.
Is there a second? Michael, second. All right. Teresa, if you recall the roll, and if you have a comment at that time, please pipe up. Teresa, you're on.
Mr. Perry?
Approve.
Mr. Campbell?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve.
Mr. O'Neil?
Approve.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Approve.
Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
Mr. Christian?
Thank you, Sherri. Appreciate all the work that went into that. That was a very, very large undertaking, and we appreciate your expertise and that of your colleagues in putting that all together. And hopefully, the comments today, you can take back next time around and drill it down some more. We really appreciate your hard work on this.
Thank you very much. You guys have a great day.
Okay, commission business. Several of the commissioners, myself including, will be departing at the end of June. Todd Theodore cycles off. Leslie has decided not to seek reappointment. Levon Stevens cycles off, and Todd Theodore cycles off. So we will be without a chair and a vice chair starting on July 1. And I have asked John Campbell and Leslie to serve with myself on a nominating committee, and we will meet prior to our June 2, I believe, meeting, and present to the commission a recommendation for chair and vice chair. And if you are interested, I spoke to several of you, but if you are interested in being considered for the position of chair or vice chair, if you would just get with myself, so we have your interest noted, and we can discuss that at our meeting prior to the commission meeting. That will be an open meeting, which Ann and Teresa will schedule. Am I correct with that, Teresa?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. So John and Leslie, I appreciate that, that you are going to serve on that committee along with myself. And I have no further chairman's report, committee report. Todd, anything on the CIP?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Michael, I know I ask you every time, you always have a very, very positive comment about the success of the comp plan, so I'll tee you up one more time.
Hey, it's done. It's good. It won an award.
Okay. Levon is not here with Gullah Kitchi Task Force. The staff, Terry, have any comments on that?
None at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. Leslie, LMO committee?
No further information right now.
All right. Thank you. And Alan?
No report.
Thank you. Terry, if you give us a staff report, please?
Yes, absolutely. The only thing that I have to report right now is that on June 2, we will have the public hearing for the revised family compound and family subdivision LMO.
Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
Any other business to come before the commission? All right, hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion that we adjourn. I got Stephen and Alan. Thank you so much. We stand adjourned. Have a great week, everyone. Take care.
Bye.